Meeting to order. It's at 6:35. And open meeting logs on stage along with extra copies of the meeting material and they'll say what. I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so, starting at the very beginning, of course, the brutal of the minutes of the regular meeting and special meeting we had with Miller and Associates to talk about the upcoming sewer project. And you will have found those in your packet. On the very first page of the regular city council meeting, second paragraph from the bottom, voting, Arlene, I found Murphy fights and border instead of Raider.
Oh.
Your type, your type, right, gentlemen. And I think on the second page, the last sentence, M A Y O K M H R.
We need to official roll call.
Yeah, yeah, we do. Okay, so, thanks, Bob. So, let's do the official roll call. Arlene, or, excuse me, I've had you on the council too long. Isla?
Yes.
Bob?
Yeah.
James?
Yeah.
And Larry?
Yes.
Okay, so, all are present. So, anybody else have anything that you want to see changed or corrected or whatever If not, I would entertain a motion to approve. First one, the regular meeting for April 5th.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Larry to approve the April 5th.
I'll second now.
And seconded by Isla. So, we'll start with Isla to vote.
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
And then for the second special meeting, which was held on what, 15th? Yeah. Do we have a motion on that one?
I'll make a motion that will accept the minutes.
Okay, motion by Isla to approve the special meeting.
I'll second.
Bob seconds. So, we'll then start with Bob?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Isla?
Yes.
Painting zoning report, I don't think, I don't think maybe anything has happened for a report there. We haven't talked to Mike. Is Mike still on vacation?
No, he's back. He was going to talk about some easements, but...
Well, we'll just move on and if he comes in a little later and wants to have some time with it, it's okay. So, the next thing is the roof repair, you have those estimates in there. I do need, want to say that, we talked about this a little bit at last meeting. Well, just, first of all, I, you need to know that the first estimate, that 4,000 came in, first of all, and then I had to call Mr. Brent to see if he was interested in doing a more extensive one. And then he said the second one, he's not as detailed as the other one, so I'm not sure what he plans to do. I don't input anybody any idea which one to do or what on the two. I might also say that when we have a bid put out to the public, if we're going to put out more than, if we're going to ask for bids, and we need to do that so everybody gets an opportunity to come and look at that and put the bids at the same time, not make a public bid and then give another person a chance to copy out that bid. I think that's less than professional in public cases.
Was there a public bid put out?
Yes, we had it in the meeting, it was public.
And we put in the, did we contact him or did he contact us or how?
We've talked to him for two years. He put the roof on, he watches it all the time.
Right. So, what you're saying, publicly would have been put in the...
Okay, James, it was at the meeting, we were talking about the bid.
Right.
And you turned to Bob and said, would Brent like to do this? Let's put this one off till we talk to Brent.
I didn't turn to Bob and say anything like that.
Okay.
But I don't remember seeing this in the paper. Was it publicized as a public bid?
It was at the meeting, that makes it public.
Okay, and then anybody committed then?
No, that was the roofer's bid. It was not a request for a bid.
It's not a public bid.
Okay. What is it when you hand in a paper that says, I'll do your roof and I'll put this, and this, and this on for $8,000, or $9,000?
That's a bid.
That's a bid.
That's a bid.
It was at the meeting, it was a public bid.
That's a bid, and we should be able to, anybody bid it. Competition is good. As we can see, anybody should be able to bid it. I don't care if we get 18 bids, anybody should be able to bid it.
Okay, so, you want one guy to bid it this week and another guy to bid it next week?
I didn't say that.
That's what happened.
That's fine, but we gave a timeline.
No, it is not fine.
We gave a timeline and you agreed to it. And we got well within that timeline.
How did Mr. Casey come to give us a roofing bid if he didn't know that we needed roofing?
He knew it because he was here and examined it two years ago.
And did we have...
And like I said, he put the roof on. And he also does commercial roofing, so he does all the commercial roofs in this area. He was in the area because he had just fixed one grocery store and, and I believe that may, I don't know for this for sure, but it seems to be like, maybe they told him to stop because they had put this paint on, they knew it was needing something. Patrick had commented about it when he had to go up on top of it, said it was needing more and so forth and so on. The bid before, the two years before was a little less than that. But he stopped in and said, this is going to be fixed. I think Mick did call and tell him to stop in because he was putting one up there. There's not very many barrel roofs in the area, they are a specialty. He will come with a hot mix, and if you look at the bids, they're very different in detail. So, I'm not going to argue what was exactly said without going back and looking at the tape. But I know that we were, I had called for a vote when the suggestion was made that Brent might want to do this, and the statement was made, if he doesn't want it, then we can go with Casey. The fact of the matter is that if we're going to let bids, it does need to be advertised legally and then we accept all the bids at the same time and look at all of them. We don't give one in and say, here's one for $9,000 publicly, oh, would you like to bid against this?
So, it was publicly thrown out, it was put out in the paper?
I answered that already. It was, we did not ask for bids.
And you said it has to be, it has to be out in the paper?
I did not say have to, James, listen to me one more time.
You did, you said it has to be.
I said, if we are going to ask for bids, then, and we decide to put it in the paper for it by some reason, the price of it or dictates we do, then we would put it in the paper and all bids would come in at the same time. We did not do that.
Why not?
Because Casey has taken care of this roof from the time it was put on. He stopped in two years ago, said, we said, we probably can't afford it at this point. He said, I'll check back with you later. I just explained that. And Mick said, why don't you stop down, down, try, I think they may have been, I don't know exactly what said there, wasn't there? But he stopped in here, we told him that, yes, it was definitely needed looked at. He came back, he got it, measured it, looked at it, blah, 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 and gave us, came back with the bid.
And so, the difference is, when I asked Brent, hey, our roof needs a look at, let me take a look at it, what's the difference between Jim Casey saying, I need to, somebody telling him we need to look at it?
Because Brent came in knowing that the bid was $9,000 something, he could beat that bid no matter what. You already had it in your hands, you could give it to him.
You're accusing us of giving it to him?
I didn't say that. I said, you had it in your hands.
How did you know the bid?
It was on, it was on the stage. I'm not going to argue this.
How did he know the bid?
It was a public, it was a public meeting.
Was it, did it give, did that...
It was in your packet.
Right.
Well, then it's public. Whatever's in your packet is on that stage, ready, better to pick up.
I understand that.
Well, then it's public.
It's not, you're, I think you're accusing us of giving it information.
Who called him?
I called him.
Exactly.
So, what?
I'm not accusing anybody of anything.
Oh, you're...
Well, it didn't matter, what you said.
I see where Casey don't have, what's the warranty on this thing, is it a year?
Neither one of them warranted anything, except that Casey said that it would probably last, I don't know, another 10 years, another 10 years. Brent told me, standing right out there, which you told me, I believe, Bob, that he said, I said, I would like the guys involved in this, who could tell them what they would do. He came on a Sunday, and had I not been working, nobody would have talked to him at all. I went out and talked to him at the latter here when he came off the roof. And he said at that point...
Casey said it would probably last 10 years?
Would, would probably last 10 years. Nobody can guarantee the initial coverage, I understand it. But Casey comes in with a matching hot mix and, like, where they pull the pipes out, he would put that comparable mix into those holes, bring it together. All you have for Brent says, I'll put flashing, that's two different things. He also said, Brent also said, when I asked him about that, he said, well, you can't guarantee anything, except the stuff I spray on has a five-year warranty, that it won't break up, nothing, I don't have any other warranty for that. And I don't believe he's...
So, we got, we got two guys...
And Bob, I'm not being nasty, but I doubt, seriously, if he's done any barrel commercial roof.
We got, we got two guys that put in bids, not, they got two different ideas of how this roof is going to be. Casey's got his and Brent Orange has got this one. So, we're not even comparing what the product's going to be, am I right? He's going to do this one, this one's going to do that, completely different, appraised.
I don't know that they're completely different.
You said it's going to, he was going to just flash it, you just said Casey said...
I'm talking about the holes of the pipes.
And he said he's going to read flash it, you said on this.
He said he would slice around the holes.
So, there's two different applications here.
Well, if you're talking about just the holes, I don't know about the whole thing. Except that Casey will put a hot mix on where it sounds like...
That's two different things we're talking about. Hot mix here, and he says he's going to spray something on it.
If, if that's the way I heard it, yes.
That's what I'm asking.
Yep.
So, we'd have two bids and not even similar applications. What's going to be a hot mix, the other's going to be a spray on.
Could, yes, could...
So, there's two different, we're not even bidding apples to apples here.
Could not be.
And there's three bids technically, because there's, this is a spray one, five-year guarantee is this pro roof max stuff. To my knowledge, that's the five-year warranty.
Yeah, that's the only thing warranted is that five-year mix.
That's, that's a different deal than the other bid.
Than what other bid?
Than this. This $8,000 doesn't include that spray on, that's a different process.
Well, what does that $8,000 bid say?
Apply asphalt.
It says spray on asphalt. We don't even know what that is. That's a spray on also.
It says apply asphalt.
Okay, apply asphalt.
On that roof, and then apply also remove unwanted pipes and repair flash.
Which is the same thing, because I told him we needed that.
Does Mr. Casey have a brochure on the product that he's going to put on, and does Mr. Orange have a product that we can look at to decide what do we want to put on?
It's, Pat, do you, I'm going to turn this over to you. Do you remember the year that that original roof was put on?
No, I don't remember the year.
Boomer, do you, did he say 20?
Yeah, it's at least 20.
It's at least 20. He's, he's never done anything, has he?
We had a little leak in that corner over there once.
But I mean, Casey's never come in and redone anything. But he has redone the grocery store, and was there another one in the area?
I'm not sure.
Okay, go, Pat.
One thing that should, missful just a little bit on is Casey was not going to do hot mix. Casey was going to put primer on the roof and...
Gotcha, I'm sorry, gotcha.
And luminized paint. So, from what I can tell from the information we got, we've got Brent Orange and Casey wanting to put a protective coating over the roof. Casey's product should last 10 years, but of course, you've done roofing, hailstorms, hailstones, all this stuff affects that, so, you know...
Neither one of them are going to...
Neither one of them can exactly tell you that it'll last five years and we hold them to it completely. There's too many variables, you've roughed, you know that. So, Casey is offering a primer and a luminized coating, a two-part, and it should last 10 years. And Brent Orange, you can see up there.
Spray on.
What I know is a spray on. I've looked on the internet a little bit, it looks like they use a lot of residential shingles, that's about all that I know, but the both products are either roll or spray on, so there are some...
Well, the only thing, the reason I said hot was that Casey said to me, standing right out there, I would have to move my equipment with the hot mix stuff here. That there's something to the primer he puts on.
Yeah, yeah, there's something with the primer.
That it's hot and sticks, guarantees a stick.
The primer helps, the second one's...
The second difference I saw was in the removal of the pipe, and maybe Brent just didn't say it. He just assumed that's what, we would assume he did. But I said, there's vents up there we don't use anymore because of the removal of the equipment out in the attic, and he said, oh, yeah, I can flash that. So, you know, and that's, and that may just mean, I'll take care of it. I'm just, I'm not so concerned about, I mean, that's a whole different story. If we, if you want a comparison of what they're going to do, then call both guys in and let them tell what they're going to do, that's simple.
That's what we should have done.
But the, but the point that we put a bid out for other people to bid against, bother. We shouldn't do that.
I suggest that we get, Mr. Casey give us a, a presentation and Brent Orange's, I don't know if Brent Orange has got a hot mix machine that he can do it, I don't know. I know Mr. Casey though, but I'm not taking side, I want to make sure that we're getting, we're bidding apples to apples instead of apples to oranges.
I agree with you, Larry.
We need to, this is, this bid here, you have two pieces.
How about we call, how about we try to call Brent in at some point to sound talk with him, what he wants to do.
All right, I think we need to get him, you know, not even, not even showing him what we're going to do. That way, they can figure out what they're going to do, and we can decide what we're going to do, because...
That's what I mean, get him in and get, have him, you want him at the same time?
Well, not necessarily, we don't have to, but we need to talk to him, some of us need to talk to him and say, what is your procedure? What's the other one's procedure?
Both of them.
At the same time?
Yeah.
But is this an exclusive deal to those two, or is this truly going to be open to the public?
Well, here's the problem, there are not, there are not too many people who are...
Capable of doing.
Capable of doing commercial.
I know. And I don't know what, Brent Orange has a hot mix machine, I know Mr. Casey has one. So, that's what, Brent Orange has got a hot tub that he sprays this stuff on with, I want to know if they're going to do the same thing, both of them. Ask him out. If he's just going to spray a modified thing, that's different than hot mix.
It's just an, because I asked, because I kind of joked with him when I said this.
I've done a lot of roofing and I know...
Is that a company product? And he said, sounds like it, that's what it is, so, and that just comes out of the cannon, put it on the spray, so...
I think, I'm, I'm, I think we need to have them both here and...
So, let's table it until we talk to them.
I think so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we have both of them come in, whether it's at a regular meeting or a special meeting.
Okay.
We can decide on that.
Okay, any second for that?
I'll second.
Mr. Swaskin, you want to say that?
Can I just offer a suggestion on that?
No.
Maybe have one come in, have them come in half an hour apart so they, yeah, we make their own presentation.
So, they ain't listening to the other one, they can tell us what they're going to do Friday.
That's my problem.
The same night, different times.
Right.
And then the other one leaves, the other one walks in.
Yeah, that's it.
Yep.
That's fine.
Do we, it's not as exclusive to these two gentlemen, or if there is somebody, are we not, we're not making this public, it's these two gentlemen? Did we advertise them?
I don't know.
Did we ever do this?
Here's the thing, if you want to...
You had an ad in the middle of April, yes.
Pardon?
You had an ad in the middle of April asking people, or right after the council meeting, to put in, if you want to submit a bid, have it to us by the 14th or 21st or whatever it was.
And nobody came in.
So, you did, yes.
We got to have some idea what kind of outcome we want it to be. We want to say, you want bid asphalt, hot asphalt, close up the vents that we're not using, tell him the same thing. Because if you tell this one, this one, how you want it done, how you want the finished product, you got to tell this guy the same thing.
Yeah, but we can't, we're not, I mean, you're a professional, but we need people that know what they're doing to present what they are capable of doing. Yes, you're right.
No, we got to know what we're going to do. I mean, they can give you a stretch of giraffe, and we don't even know it. I mean, we're serious, we got to, we got to figure out what we kind of want to do.
Okay, Isla made a motion that we opened this up, we asked both of them to come in and tell us exactly what they're going to do. Remember that one of the things that we were concerned about was trying to get it done this summer, of course, and, and we're always concerned about people's schedules. So, do we second Isla's motion here?
I'll second.
Okay, so, Isla made a motion that we get both gentlemen in to present. Larry has seconded, do you mind if it's just a special meeting and that's all you have?
No, no, yes.
Okay. So, a vote start with James?
Yes.
Yes.
Isla?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes.
Okay, what's it going to be, a special meeting or during a regular meeting?
We wait for the next meeting, it's going to be in...
That's it, okay.
In June or anything, we should have a special meeting probably this next week or week after.
We want a special meeting for financials, as just as soon as the...
We can do it then.
Can we do it with that one?
We have a special meeting, we can do it.
As soon as the auditors are completely finished, which should be this week.
Okay.
I've got some stuff to go back to them, when, Stan, and they, I don't know when that's going to be.
So, we got to find out when they both come.
Okay, we'll get a letter, we'll have the clerks get a letter out to them and see what dates, they will be, we can pick some available dates and have them pick, is that okay? Let us know. In your packets was added tonight, the reports from Jonathan, and Jonathan wasn't able to be here. You already had his proposal for an increase in wage, and he just has that kind of brought in there again. And then there's that speed sign report, and I'm got, I don't have it in front of me, but just what he dropped off to me and we talked briefly. He didn't, he said that any movable sign is outrageously expensive. I think that's why Main Street probably didn't look at those real seriously. The, he looked at like a set of wheels that you could hook onto it and hook it onto a pickup or whatever. And as we talked, I said, but that makes it awful vulnerable for stealing too, anybody going to have to take on.
But did Jonathan refer movable?
No, he doesn't.
Oh, he didn't? Okay.
The more he thought about, you know, that whole thing, and then you got to have a place to store that.
Well, not only that, but the state says where and when, don't they, or where?
They will, I mean, if you put it on the state highway, they tell us where and when.
Yeah.
Does not county have a movable sign, or like a movable radar?
I don't know.
I, I wonder if they, I think that they might, and that might be an option as like in addition to whatever you sign.
I've been told that you have to rent those, but I've never checked into them, I guess, I just kind of...
I don't personally, I just believe that they might have it or...
Well, Main Street Treasurers has generously said, and they did, they did research, obviously. And they said that they were allotting $4,000 because there's two of them in those brochures that they gave us that you could get, one was under, just a little under four, and I think one was a little over. The state will put them out, they set on, they are attached to a post and they stay permanent. That post could probably be moved if we decided we wanted it in a different location, that's what Mick thought. So, Jonathan said, you know, it would be nice to have one here, here, and here, if they do their job, and there's that if. So, you know, my suggestion to him was, what if, or my comment to him was, what if we start with the one that's like $3,800 or something that will be covered by those funds, the state will put out, he prefers that it be over at the bottom of the hill, there's they come in off there and that's always having traffic with trucks. And see if it, see if it is, does a noticeable difference.
I agree.
If it doesn't, then we could start putting, if it does, we could invest the money, if it doesn't, why invest the money?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to do that.
Okay.
Mr. Swaskin, if you do want to move it, the state will probably have to...
Yes.
...up with a new, a new location for you, and that may take a little while.
Does it, does it on a battery, or are we going to have power in it?
No, it's solar.
Solar?
Yep. So, it shouldn't cost us anything.
Can we, can we put that on the jack brakes too? Hey, listen, hey, we've been looking at those things.
I think so, yeah, sounds...
I didn't hear them, to my help.
Yeah, they, when you can hear them, you can hear them, but they're not, they're not rolling us out of bed anymore when they come down there, you can hear them, but they're not rolling us out of bed. The sign did help there, I think, on both ends. So, James has made a motion to start with the one that will be covered by the funds on Main Street, and then see how that goes. So, if I have a second?
The, the state physically installs it or is it powered or installed?
No, they install.
They physically, also.
Second by Bob? And then we'll start with Larry?
Yeah.
Isla?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And James?
Yes.
And so, now the next one is your wage increase for part-time police officer and for police officer, going to deal with that. Quite frankly, I think that needs to go on with, we're going to do a whole list of things and stuff, the auditors suggested that even the cost of the showers and stuff, as if they all be on a sheet and put into an ordinance, and I would suggest we do that with the advice of the auditors. So, you can vote to raise that, that's not what I'm saying, you can vote to give the raises, but we need to then make those all public. And I don't know how, if, if we're going to, well, I'll just let you decide what you want to say now.
Do we have to say a certain amount like what he's asking for now?
I would suggest that the council...
Go along with the...
Decide, no, you decide whether it should go up or down. Remember, we've got four people that work, we've got two maintenance guys that haven't had a raise for two years either. So, and the gals in the office are a little younger, but they, they were pretty cheap too.
Question, would you like to have an amount of the increase rather than the dollars stated? The amount of the increase rather than the total?
You mean like a built-in raise or dollar raise?
Yeah, rather than giving out the...
Well, I'll tell you one, the one part of his proposal I don't like, I don't like a built-in raise every so many months, that gets us in trouble.
How are we looking on that, on the budget? Are we going over budget on some of this stuff? Are we going over budget on some of this stuff?
The police, the police budget is, um, has always been up, depending, up, up in the last two years because of the cost of ammunition and some things that has, was highly anticipated. Um, there again, I'd like to have the auditors finish out all of that, so you can look at all of that. Again, I'd suggest table this for, till, after that special meeting.
Is that gonna be done pretty soon, you think?
Well, like I said earlier, a couple weeks, they should be done.
Can we address this the next meeting, then?
You can address it, yes. And you can address it even at the financial meeting if you want, but if you want to put all the fees together and talk just money, we'll do that.
So, do we, do we adjust or pay once a year, or do we do it twice a year, or three times a year, or what do we do?
Well, like I said, we haven't changed anything.
Usually I thought it was just in the last, just once a year, and we, we look at the, you know, the salaries and the scales, and that's when we make, that's what I thought we did.
Ever, we have, in the past, we have not raised anything since we've come into office like.
Sure.
When, when we first came in, remember, we gave, we gave, um, those two guys a 50 cent raise, that's it.
But when, when Jonathan, I don't like to talk, he's not here, but, uh, what contract, what did his contract say? He said three years, and it says nothing about subway. It doesn't say anything?
Does it include formal evaluations by, do you have documentation of evaluations of Jonathan?
That's a touchy one, Bob, that's a good one, and I need to talk to our lawyer about that because, in effect, because he's the owner of police officer, he's also the chief of the place, gives him a lot of latitude. Uh, there are some decisions that he makes, like, um, and, and I think the board needs to, I need, I think we need to talk about this whole thing of, of, um, you know, job evaluations, um, who knows what? Um, I have the power to fire him, but it doesn't tell me, I've got much other power, and nobody wants power.
Well, you would just think for him, if you're yourself...
Does the board have a, uh, we could take him in executive session, have him sit down, and we can talk to him that way? If he wants to do it that way, or have it out in the public?
Uh, you never have, you, no. I think all, all job evaluations are either in closed session, or at the request of the employee being evaluated in open session.
That's right.
They get, they get...
They down here, so we can...
We're not doing that tonight, okay? We're, we're saying, what, you know, what do, where should we look at this? If we're gonna look at an increase in any budget, I am, I think we need to do it after we have all of the changes and cuts, you can go back from the outset.
I agree. We gotta, we gotta, we're sitting first, right?
Exactly. So that's why I'm suggesting...
Just like we get to other reports, can we ask him to give us a monthly report? He's at a meeting, and he would...
Yes, and that's in, that's in, I was just talking, and going back to records, and Pat Smith used to give like a monthly report, and he can't tell you what exactly he's doing, but they can give reports like, um, I answered so many barking dogs, and I gave so many speeding tickets, and they can't say how.
You can see what his deal was like.
Yes, yes.
I think that would help us out a little bit, knowing what his job...
And I've got some examples to show Jonathan on that, so that he can start doing that.
Well, just like, you know, if he kept his one of these trucks going in here too fast, or something like that, to see that was...
He cannot tell us what exactly truck does, I guess, it was truck, he can't, he can say, I can't...
He could say, he could say to stop the vehicle.
Yes, he can give so many...
It doesn't have to be extensive, just how many are this and how many are that.
That, that's correct.
And the other thing is, is that I'd like to see, and, and we're working on that, is so that we have, um, more of a knowledge of his working hours, where he's gonna be when. And he's, he's gonna start turning that in.
Can we ask him where he has done this? I mean, at, either in the Profton or in town?
It's gotta be in town, it can't go out.
Not on the highways? Okay.
Unless he's in pursuit.
Well, yeah.
Or accompanying, you know. If he's requested to go with the ambulance, he can go.
Will that be published in the neighborhood?
I don't believe it ever was.
I think Bloomfield does, and a couple other communities do.
Um, I guess.
See what is going on in this.
Well, it's always a matter of public record, once it's in the, it's in the minutes.
Just another idea.
Would you, you just think for yourself, if you had a formal evaluation, a written thing, if you had to get to the situation where you had to remove them from office, you would have documentation?
Oh, absolutely.
And, and then...
I keep my notes, but they're not public necessarily.
For us, we, I would personally like to see, because I have extensive evaluations on myself for all our city employees, and I know it's cumbersome, but is there a formal evaluation form process that all the city employees go through?
Um, to my knowledge, there has never been a set standard of anything. Um, we, when did we, and do the, um, remember when we did the handbook, Larry, or Arlene, was that two years ago? Year, maybe a year ago?
November of nineteen.
So we tried to standardize some things there, but a lot of that is, you know, about your benefits and, you know, what's expected, kind of thing.
Right, I mean, you just...
And I've talked with the auditors about what kind of latitude or restrictiveness we should use in setting up like policies, like office policy, like, um, you know, procedure, those kind of things. And, um, we've kind of started working on some of that stuff, 'cause we can't find anything of any value, or any guidance. And that kind of stuff, especially since we separated the clerk from the treasurer. We want both to be able to carry on any of the jobs, and those small towns have a clerk slash treasurer, because they can't afford or don't have the personnel to do both. But since we have two gals, um, we've separated that, they'll both sign checks and can do any of the work mostly, but, you know, the clerk is, is more storage and filing and notes and, you know, the minutes and the agendas and the mailings and the what have you. Doesn't mean they can't open a check and take it, but...
I mean, it's a little bit more cumbersome, but if you have a formal evaluation yearly, and you tie that to, okay, do an exemplary at work, obviously then we're compensating, for example, at work, it just make the whole process easier.
It may be, Bob, but you gotta remember that we've got two places in town that are closing down, not because they can't find people to work.
Well, I, I'm, I'm...
You know, and I think I heard a couple of them in, in, uh, the act that are closing because of lack of people to work.
Yeah.
I don't know if our stimulus is to make them not wanna work, or what they, you know, but, but I understand what you're saying.
Recognize them for doing good work, I mean, if it's exemplary at work, so it should be in their benefit that, you know, they're doing the same...
And then the budget comes in, yes, you deserve to make thirty dollars, but we can't afford to pay you twenty.
Right, and if we had documentation to do that, that would make it easier for all of us to do it.
And it also gives employees, yes, to say, here are my questions, that I have a concern with, and then be able to discuss it with the board, and these are my goals, I like to work on, and try to talk with the board about that as well. I just...
Okay, so we want to table that one till next week. Um, the, I, and what we're gonna want to table this one, because almost have to, talked about making a change in the meeting time and date. Remember, um, Arlene took some time and went through the bills that come in, remember when we changed it to the first of the month? Um, we put out, um, we put out, into all of our vendors, basically, put a note in there that they needed to get their bills to us, their bills to us by the first, if we're gonna pay them. Because that, that meeting might actually fall on the first, where it would be approved. And a lot of them changed their timing, so now if we go back the other way, they're gonna be set in. So if, if, um, if changing to the third has something to do with the financial statements, the only thing that is different here would be, if you go to the third, you would expect your books to end, end April, whereas, like, tonight at the first, they end at the end of April, or March. So you got one month difference. But it's gonna cause a whole new format for paying bills and late charges and credit card overpaying, or overdoses and so forth and so on. We cannot pre-approve everything. There's only certain things you can approve, pre-approve, and that's things like the taxes, the, um, the, the things, the insurances, those things that are a month late have to thank any bill, like the cadence across the street, or, um, the credit, like I said, the credit card, I don't know who else, it seems like there's always too many of them, but those cannot be pre-approved. So we would be either making exceptions, or, 'cause we can't just pass them in. So just think about that, okay? Because we have to have an ordinance anyway. And we don't have that, I, or did you, do we have one in the package?
I think there is a one.
There is one in there that we can approve, but if, if you wanna think about it, we can bring that in next month also.
Other question?
Yes.
Uh, built like electricity and natural gas, are those not predictable enough to be in that category?
The gas, electric, I mean, yes, and like, the water that is provided to us, that we charge for them, yes.
All is changing.
Those are, those are pre-approved.
Oh, okay.
They're pre-approved. And payroll, taxes, insurances.
Good, okay.
And the payroll, exactly.
I just don't like to have a month back for finances, we don't know what current stuff is. I don't know how to go about doing this, other towns must do it, because are they a month behind every time they get their stuff?
It depends on when their, their deal is, but...
Well, that's what we gotta figure out, so we're not a month behind. I mean, we should be, you know, in, in May, we should be taking, we should be closing April stuff up and having April stuff here instead of...
And, and we could do that if, if you're, you know, if you're not dead set about which month you're doing, if we're in the second month, we can do that, we can, you know, when they're closed, we can close them. If they're, if we're, if it's the 31st and, um, the 31st is on a Friday, and we haven't got the reconciliation done from the bank, you can't quite get them by next Monday, see if it falls on that one, next Monday. But if you wanna get them closed as to the closest date, I, I don't see a problem with that.
We still can't have it on the first Monday, though, 'cause you're not gonna have your paperwork ready and, and stuff to the board members, because it's, it takes time, because...
That's what I'm saying.
But we could have it, you know, when did we pick the second week? What, what was wrong there? We had some kind of...
School board Monday.
Well, Tuesday's golf. You know, what's a, what's... No, I mean, I mean, everybody's got their stuff, don't get me wrong, but I mean, you know, the first Thursday, I don't know if there's anything going on Thursday, have the board members, do you?
Well, you get into school year, and you got a whole lot of people into athletic activities, um, band music, the, the Monday night isn't choice because of the school activities, I think.
I just think it would be a lot drier for us board members to have, instead of, we're in May, now we gotta go with March, and April's still sitting there in limbo yet, because you don't have enough time to do it. So if you go to that first Thursday, I mean, I, well, we gotta make sure the board members can get here, you know?
Right, and the public.
Well, the public can make, they gotta decide if they wanna come to the board meeting or what.
Well, and here's, here's the thing, Larry, this is, you know, the financial supervision issue, nobody's gonna say the opposite. Um, we've gotten a lot of time here without the closing, closing, as you would prefer to happen, and that, I understand.
I would love to have them closed.
But here's the, the whole process of closing, we can do it in afternoon, once the books are all in what shape they're supposed to be in. So, so you have, um, if, if you wanna hang on to where you are, you can do, we could have, like, this is the first of May, I'm talking off the top of my head, it's impossible, all right. Um, if, if this is the first Monday in May, um, then, um, we could have April completely closed, or, I mean, March completely closed, and then you could have a May, um, that is conditional upon the closing. The only thing the closing does is add your profit and loss to your...
Right.
So it's not a big change.
With that said, where do we add as far as closing books?
We have, um, we have made the, all of the entries that the auditors sent out for us to make.
That was for twenty, twenty-two dollars?
Well, they put it in, anything they want us to change, they, like, uh, certain expenses, like, uh, big expenses, like, um, help me out the two big ones, insurance and audit costs, what's that? I think the auditing cost. They want us to spread out amongst the funds, but since we'd already closed those books for the last year, they said start your next year. They also do the depreciation, and they do the, um, they get what the county, because the county figures what the, that cash on hand reserve is. So when they get those figures, then they tell us deposits and books to start next year, we can't do the reconciliation till we do that yet. So, um, they, they've set a rough draft, and I, and I, and I'm gonna be writing any of our questions back to them by Wednesday, and then we should have, we should have, be ready to start closing by Friday.
Then are we gonna stay closing them every, every month when they're on?
They say they're ready. The auditor said they're ready, yeah.
I mean, our officers haven't closed books every, I can't go eleven months and still have them on hold.
Why don't we let it ride for a little month or two and see what happens, but again, get past that financial meeting? 'Cause I think once you get past that, you'll see how those reports are really, gotta be able to be ready to. We broke them down into smaller groupings, so you won't have these long pages. The operating department will be longer, it's no longer just operating and policing. That's where all of your recreation, sports, all that stuff comes in, into your general fund, and you see where that funding comes from, you're presented that, then you'll see the difference of that plus the, um, because I, I asked Eddie to make, as part of the funding, or as part of the closing tools, if he would make that, so it would automatically move the, uh, for example, the operating fund is made up of the taxes we get from the county and the franchise fees and those kinds of things. If, if we take those and spread them out to our recreation departments, you know, a baseball, uh, baseball, softball, um, swimming, that's the sports group within that recreation, and we have the auditorium, we have, now the summer, you'll have the lawn mowing and so forth, and the parks. Um, there's the water wells and so forth that go through the parks. That will all be an automatic, broken down into those funds, possibly for our general fund. Where before, they were in the recre, that recreation, auditorium and everything, was in parks and recreation fund, and that was being funded by the lost fund.
But you just said, okay, the guys have to work at the parks, and work at the water, and everything, and so, is the wages gonna come out of the, and be distributed out of there, so we don't have it all in general, and we got all kinds of paperwork that we're looking at now?
But remember that the general includes all of those areas. So what used to go, when they weren't mowed at North Park, that was, that was charged to the North Park.
If the wages come out of that general fund, or, you know what I'm saying, out of the water, take the wages out of there, or is it just gonna be the same way as we've been doing? Right now, the general fund pays for everything, that's how the general fund is, you still gotta take and put...
No, that was, those...
Now, you still gotta put hours to the sewer, to the water...
They were before the audit, yes, that's done. If you look under each one of those headings, you'll find wages and, and benefits. If you look under each one of those headings, you'll find wages and benefits. So those are expensive funds, yes. But they won't be coming out of restricted funds. And that's what, so, and, and Eddie said, you know, this is what you objected to before, he said, because they were restricted, and he said, yeah, you're right, you were. So I hope we've got that all straightened out. Why I want the financial meeting, so that we can go through that and see the difference. Then if you still want some changes, we'll go back to the auditorium.
But are we just gonna be taking out another month and a half?
Yes.
So we've got six months gone now, they are out of the funds yet, right?
Nope.
They're all in general.
Not out of the, no.
So then when are, what's gonna be?
When, I, I'm gonna say this again, we've got two weeks that I'm going to try to have everything done for the financials. So every question you have, when is this going to be done, when we get that financial meeting, everything will be done.
So we're not even waiting another month or two?
I just answered.
Well, that statement was maybe a little bit, wait a month or two and then we'll see. So I'm just trying to get the.
No, my question, my statement of, wait a month or two, was to see if the board then was able to work with the financial reports as they were coming out. They can work with those to see if they like the way they've done. The update fee schedule, same thing as we've been talking about, I think, if you cover the maintenance and equipment update, we need to build a, we need to build a strip that the guys can do some work. So if you have no objections to that, we can order the oil and the sand and that stuff and get that strip going.
I am objecting, I, I think we hold off on that.
Okay, what, tell me what your objection is, James.
I talked to the guys, Knife River was in town last week, I talked to them. So we talked about doing crocked and like they did in Fordice. He said, when we did Fordice, we couldn't use any of their asphalt. He said, the asphalt you guys have in your tree here, you cannot remix, can't be done. You can't take that grinder and grind it up and remix it instead of going out there. So then I talked to the state of Nebraska, when they fixed the road on the 121, it was curved by the golf course. He said, we took that out, we couldn't use that asphalt either. We had to go to Yankton and get fresh asphalt, put it in with a hot mix and roll it out. He said, we can't grind up, he said, that asphalt is just shot, we can't reuse it.
You do know that that's not the only thing being used, that.
But we're, but we're doing, we're doing the same thing, and you're spending $10,000 and our shit, and worse and worse and worse. You can drive around and you can see where they built it, and the stuff they put back in didn't stay, it only stays for a few, a few weeks.
We're not gonna be putting that stuff back in. That stuff they put back in came from the strip when it was three years old.
Right, but you keep taking around and showing me where they put it in, it's not here anymore, it's gone. It's not there anymore. I don't know why we keep doing this. This is a 20-year-old process, maybe a 30-year-old process, it doesn't, unless you're gonna do a hot mix with hot asphalt, it is dangerous, wasting the money this calendar does.
Okay, then I need you to come in, sit down, we'll all sit down to a process.
Yeah.
See what, if Knife River has all the answers, but.
They, they said some of your roads aren't bad, we could just go along the side.
So what you're really doing is asking them to think and come in what they would charge us to do.
Sure.
Well, and that's a big thing.
True.
So.
True.
So we need to keep.
Keep doing what we're doing.
We're not doing what we've always done, that's what we're trying to change.
Well, you, you're gonna grind it up and try to reuse it.
We've never done that before, James.
I know, but it can't be done.
Okay.
It cannot be done. I talked to the guys that do it for elimination, they said you cannot do it that way.
Okay.
Ground is seen at all the time, man.
What's that?
Ground is seen at all the time out here.
On a hot mix that they give?
Oh, on a hot mix.
We don't have hot mix in.
I know, that's what we need to use, is a hot mix, not a, not a full mix.
Look at Sherwood Street and look at the Wells Street, that's hot mix.
Right, that's what we need to do. What's that?
See all the crap in that?
All asphalt's gonna crack up, it's a matter of time.
Well, then why are you bringing asphalt in?
It's better than bringing in oil and a mix of gravel and oil, that doesn't stay more than a month.
Nobody uses it.
What are you guys looking to do? Grind up the asphalt, right?
Yeah.
And they're telling me that can't be done.
Well, yeah, the county's been doing it for years.
The county asphalt.
Bring your people in, James.
I'll bring them in, they're telling me you can't take this asphalt, grind it up and remix it and put it down.
We'll just, we'll just set aside a date, we'll sit down and talk to them.
Okay.
Eddie's year-end adjustments are on the big sheet, okay? And the auditor's adjustments are there also. Those are already in the books. Don't, did they just get those today?
Yes, they did.
Okay, those took some putting together, so I would like to, there's two things here going. Joe wants to talk to us about the golf course, give his report. We have a liquor license application from the American Legion, and we have to approve the claims and we have errand with economic development. So let's just kind of let all this right for, and all, do a little healing here and get back to work, and we'll get something done in next week. Okay? We're gonna talk about Zeta and that related. Joe, you wanna stay a while, you wanna do yours?
Well, we'll do ours. I might have to hear the speaker. We won't take too long. You have a speaker here?
Joe, you wanna use the mic?
Here's the. No, I don't have. Can you all hear him okay?
Teacher voice.
Yeah. Um, per our agreement with the city, and I'm talking about the Golf Course Association, how this thing works, the city has the agreement with the Corps of Engineers, and the Golf Course Association has a concessionaire's agreement with the city, and that was just renewed not too many years ago. But in that agreement, the golf course is to give an annual report to the city council. Okay. As you can well expect, 2020 was a little bit different. We weren't, we weren't able to open until late, we couldn't have our annual meeting until October. At that meeting, two directors were re-elected for a three-year term, Michael Cook and myself. We didn't make any major purchases last year, however, we did experience one of our best financial years we've had in recent years. Once we were able to open, I think it was just because people wanted to get out, and golf course was a good place to go. Our financials for 2020 and 2019 are right here, I'll leave a copy of that. 2021 will be different, we did open on time, we held our annual meeting on March 17th. At that time, three officers were elected to the board, Ryan Gieden, who serves as our president, Don Edwards, and Steve Kaiser. For your information, we are in conversation with News Channel Nebraska, and they are in the process of putting the weather can out on our number five tee box, which will look straight up the lake, and actually provide some spectacular sunsets for the viewers in Nebraska. Also, just below that number five tee box, we made an addition there. And if you're a golfer, you'll, you'll see it there, and if you're not a golfer but a bowler, you can see it from, what, two, three miles up the lake?
And we can see it from across the lake, you can't out.
We got a very big block, Red End, over there. Some of the, some of the guys that are Iowa fans want to know if, if Iowa just won three games the next three years, we put an I next to it. No, we're not. Per our agreement, we also have to have your approval for any purchases over $25,000. And this year, it's necessary for us to replace both the rough mower and the greens mower, and the negotiated costs are approximately $9,000 for the two. So we need your approval to purchase those two items and to approve the directors from both last year's annual meeting and this year's.
Did you shop around for the mowers?
I'm sorry?
Did you shop around for prices on the mowers?
Yeah, yeah, our superintendent's been shopping for two years, maybe three.
Man, that's a lot of money, isn't it?
It's a tough time to buy a mower, they're in the mowers.
Brian, Toral, is that what?
Yeah, they're both Toral mowers.
They're both Toral mowers. Dan is, Dan McFarland's our superintendent, and he's very, he's, he's very conservative.
He's a conservative.
So do we.
Frank and I will never see any more new mowers out.
No, no. How many hours does that baby have on it?
I thought you said eight thousand, and the salesman said you only see one on the mower ever before it had as many hours on it, and it still works.
I mean, such a good care.
Are you able to sell these other ones then, that you want to give?
Maybe you could pass them down to the city.
The.
Or trade-in?
The rough mower, well, the trade-in, the value that they give you on something like that is, is nil. Once we, we get the thing completed, get the new ones in line, or online, I, I think we may consider selling the old one, then we would, we would be better off selling outright than trying to get a trade-in.
The, the new mower is 65 grand, you're shopping the new mower, and they were gonna give 25,000 for it, for the old one. So, and Dan thinks he can get 6, 7,000 bucks for it, sell it outright sometime, so, you know, and it's still functional, so they might even mow the road in it for another 15 years if I don't dance. Or Neil.
Next time, bring your hat.
I, I could've left home with it.
Take up a collection.
Okay, I could've left home with it, but it would not have been on by the time I got here.
So we need to call for a vote to approve.
Yeah.
Purchase, is that correct?
Board members.
Board members, and, can we do a vote with the same?
Yeah.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the board members of the golf association, is that what it's called?
Yep.
And the approve, and approval of the purchase of the mowing equipment that they need. I'll do that motion. Okay, motion by Larry.
I'll say it.
Seconded by James. And we start with Larry.
Yes.
Isla?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And James.
Can you even get the mower? Yeah. It's really hard to get.
Oh, well, we kinda got on him enough this winter to come on, come on, come on, we had some extra money, so, yeah, they're supposed to deliver them like, pretty soon. Maybe in the next few days.
The other thing is, it's not the city's money.
It's a beautiful, but it's a beautiful golf course, and we, and we benefit from it.
Thank you.
And thank you.
You're happy?
Yep.
Yes, sir. Michael, would you like to give us a report?
Sure. Thank you.
You bet, thank you for coming, guys.
Who was the game?
Frank.
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 Yeah.
I hope to have this a little earlier. What this is, is a statement from our city lawyer about easements. We've got a lot of. About easements.
That's what it is.
And, thank you. This will help us a little bit.
Do we need to make any move, do we need to make a motion or do anything with this? Or is this just a clarification?
As far as I'm concerned, it's just a clarification.
Okay. Do you want to talk about it a little bit?
Yeah, I'll, I'll actually read it, although you haven't had a chance to read it.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's, some of that's my fault, and if you want to look at the date, it's today.
That's all right.
I had actually.
We're all just getting back in.
Several weeks ago, and finally, finally. Okay, just further to the beginning of things, the two applications that were approved this month, only two presented, were for Betty Hamilton, a new concrete driveway, and John Prana, a new concrete patio with arid. So those are the two building permits that were approved this month. And I have sent you a, each board member an email regarding that, as well as the newspaper. But just to go over this, I think it's worth a read. Again, this comes from our city attorney, Michael Stevens, and you can read the information above there. But moving on, beginning with the text. Couple of questions have arisen concerning the obligations and duties of the city and citizens, and its citizens concerning existing easements. The first thing one must do to get a copy of the easement is to get a copy of the easement which has been recorded in the register of deeds in Ox County. That document will provide valuable information. First of all, it will tell you when the easement was recorded, the date it was recorded, and provides notice to all future owners of the property. Okay? All future owners of the property. Second, the easement describes whether the easement is perpetual or permanent, or for a number of years. The purpose of the easement, it's stated. The width and length of the easement, that's stated, and what authority and rights the grantee of the easement is receiving, the, the one who has the right to use the easement, regarding maintenance, repair, replacement, and so on. Any questions about definition? That's, if not, we'll just go on. An easement does not give any ownership to the grantee, the person to use the easement. The owner of the property can still use the easement, but subject to the easement. Thus, if the owner wants to construct a fence or building on their property, then they can do that, as long as it does not hinder the grantee's use of the easement. So if the grantee needs to repair or replace a water, electrical, phone line, whatever that might need to be involving the easement, the owner has placed a building or obstruction over the line, if that's the case. It will be the owner's responsibility and cost to remove the building or obstruction at their cost, at their cost. Because when the owner purchased the property, the easement had already been recorded, and thus the owner had notice and knowledge of the easement, even if we were not told of that, it's there. It's part of the property, it's been there ever since the property was dedicated for that purpose, the easement. The owner took a chance and assumed the liability, even if they didn't know it was there. If a building permit is, any questions there? I don't blame you if you have some. If a building, going on, if a building permit is issued by the city allowing an owner to construct a building which ultimately intrudes or is going to be built over an existing easement, this is a question, does that subject the city to any liability? Okay? That's one of the questions I ask. The building permit issued by the city merely gives consent to build. It is not the responsibility of the city to determine if there are any easements affected by the building permit requested. The owner should already know if there are easements on his property. It doesn't say that there, but that's on his property is the question. The owner of the property makes the decision whether they want to take the risk and they're willing to assume the liability if they choose to build over an easement. The owner assumes all responsibility, and the city does not assume any liability by merely granting the building permit. I would recommend, however, that for all future building permits to be issued, it would be advisable to add a sentence or paragraph that merely states the city is not assuming any liability. The city has not made any representations upon the existence, validity, or parameters of any of the easements that might exist and are affected, and affected by the building permit, and that the owner assumes all responsibility concerning any easement that may or may not exist. Now, on building permit, it says that you may need to have a survey made to know. Now, on building permit, it says that, uh, you may need to have a survey made to know what the property limits are and the information about any easements are available at the county office register deed.
So the one you and I were talking about, they can do that, as long as they assume responsibility if something happens?
Well, they can build on the easement.
What's that?
They cannot build on the easement.
It just says right here they can, as long as they assume the responsibility if something goes wrong?
Doesn't say that there.
The owner wants to construct a fence or a building, apparently they can do that as long as it does not hinder the guaranteed use of that easement. So as long as they...
On their property, they can build a fence.
Right.
But they cannot build it on the easement.
It just says that they can, as long as, as long as they give them access to that.
They build on, if they build on the easement, it impedes the use of the easement.
The easement would be impeded as a result of the fence.
Yeah, but it said right here that if they did build on it, it would be their responsibility to coster into the building. It said right here in black and white.
In other words, they can't legally build.
No, they can, they can. They just gotta...
No, they said they could build and then they can take the liability that they have to move it, which means they weren't...
Okay, let's, let's look at that sentence again.
So they can build it.
Let's look at the sentence.
Okay.
Okay, you want to read that for us?
Yep, so the guarantee needs to read, okay, let's...
Start it, start at the top of paragraph number two.
An easement does not give any ownership to the, to the guarantee. The owner of the property can still use the property, but subject to the easement. Thus, if the owner wants to construct a fence or building on the property...
On their property.
On their property.
Their property, not the easement.
When the easement falls through the property.
Their property, not the easement.
The easement is on their property.
Their property, not the easement. Their property, not the easement.
The easement is on their property.
The easement is their property, but they are not entitled to use it unless they choose like a garden
No, it's...
or some other purpose that's not going to obstruct the easement.
Not hinder the guaranteed easement. So if the guarantee needs to repair, replace the water, electrical or telephone line, and the owner has placed a building or obstruction over that line, it will be the owner's responsibility and cost to remove that building, obstruction and cost be charged because the owner purchased the property. The easement has already been recorded. So the way I read this, they can build it with the understanding of they need to go get it, get at it. They can go right through their fence.
Now, they can tear it apart.
Right. As long as they agree to that. And in their case, they were gonna build three gates, I believe. Two on the easement and one on the back of the property.
I'm not opposed to that, however, the utilities are.
Not all of them.
Well, one of them is.
Yeah, but I don't know, you know...
Great Plains has no give there.
And is it in our ordinances that they have to sign off on these?
Yes. The, the easements belong to them.
Is it in our ordinance that they have to sign off on those? Is it in our ordinance that they have to sign off on them?
I do not know the answer to that detail on your question, Jim.
Okay, then we...
It has been the practice that we have pursued.
Is it, is it, is it law?
I do not know the answer to your question.
Can you get me that answer? You gonna email it up this week to see?
I'll try to find that out. Uh, that involves some research that may take a while. Cause I don't know when that might have been implemented.
That's fine. I don't know where...
What's the question is, do we have a...
We're having the utility sign off with the granted access. And in this case, your county had no problem. The telephone had no problem.
I know, I know it's the case.
So I called around and talked to several people that work in this industry, saying that we don't sign off on any of these. People can build our easements, they just gotta understand that we need to go through that, we're going through that wall to get to our stuff. If the people are building...
Okay, so let me put it this way. Our building permit, I believe, is designed to allow that property owner the knowledge of where, that, that if that easement exists, that everybody agrees they can use it. If somebody says, "No, you can't use it," before it gets torn down, please don't build it. That's a courtesy to the homeowner, landowner, more than it is to anybody else.
I have no problem, but if they're willing to take on that risk, that's their choice.
Well, we can check, but, but our, our planning and zoning says they can't build. So yes, it's a city ordinance, I believe. They can't build on, on an easement. It's not just that landowner, it's the other people. If you're shutting a gate on an easement and a fire department can't get down there or electric company can't get down there to fix the transformer that's next to your neighbor, you're causing a serious problem.
I just talked to somebody, they have it all the time, we just cut them and go on in. We have access to that easement.
It belongs to them.
And it belongs to them. So if you lock a gate, he goes, "We just carry bolt cutters, we just cut it and go on in."
But James, why should we just say, "Just cut it and..." I mean, why should somebody have to do that?
I'm saying, no, I'm not saying they should have to do it, but I'm saying you're, you're hindering, telling somebody what they can and cannot do on their own property.
They just can't do it on the easement.
Which is their property.
Okay. Well, we, he's done as much as he can to get the lawyer's opinion on it. So, uh, take this into consideration. We'll look at the ordinances, um...
Personally, just to say, personally, I'm not opposed.
No, I know you're not.
I, I would assume they did that.
I, I...
Cause I don't see any real resolution to that particular problem.
I don't either, other than saying, "We'll let you do it."
Cause they can't get at the easement from either end.
No, they can't, right now, you can't get at that easement from either end, so it's out of...
Well, and, and... That's a special case, but we have other cases where, because one built on it, somebody else built on it, somebody else built on it. And then you can't get into the backside of the street somewhere and you cause a real hazard.
Well, this, this does make statements regarding that, that the homeowner is responsible. And also, if you want, here, I'll read this, uh, dedication of the easement in that particular case that we're in reference to. Uh, because it does give some responsibility. Uh, "Grantees shall have the right to erect utility poles with all necessary wires and fixtures thereon and to keep them free from foliage and repair and the same, or to install underground cables required." So free of foliage and able to repair. So actually, the trees are the utilities difficult. And they, they can't remove them as needed. So you're, yes.
And it says that the city is not liable, but the homeowner is.
Yeah.
And if they want to take the risk and are willing to assume the liability if they choose to build over an easement, uh, the owner assumes all responsibility. The city does not assume any respons, any liability. Um, so what they're saying is, we're, the city's covered.
Right.
So it doesn't matter whether we approve it or not.
Right.
But what we do is a service to the landowner that says, "If you build here, you could pay the consequences."
And, and I think that's how we, we shouldn't have any, and I agree, you, we've talked about this. I agree, we shouldn't have any say, but they have to realize that we probably should have something written up by might to have them sign to keep on, that we explained this, if you build over the easement and a storm comes in and they gotta drive over your new fence to get to it?
That's what that building permit does.
But I think, but...
It's on the statements, but...
It's on the statements. When that company, when, when, whether it's electric or whether it's Mike or whether it's water, whether it's a sewer, says, "No, they won't sign it, it's because we need to get through here. If you build, you build at your own risk and you may have to pay for it."
Right, but is that, is that stated on the building permit?
Uh, it's, statement says, um, "You must be aware of any easements on your property."
But does it say, "If you build over the easement, it is..."
No, it does not give...
Yeah, we need to change that.
That's what he's saying, here, that might be something you need to put in.
We need to change that.
We can.
We need to change, add that. We shouldn't have, so we, we're saying we have no say whether they can build or not.
No, we have no liability.
Or no say.
Actually, actually, I think you probably are right there, that it's been a little different in my thoughts.
True.
Uh, not having a lot of experience with this, um...
Cause they're taking the responsibility.
What, what are your thoughts? Any, Kim, do you recall any thoughts here?
Well, from five or six years of that, uh, if, if, I think you pretty well have had it covered just the way we used to interpret it. Is, we can't tell you to not do that, but if they need to be there, they're gonna be there and you just better prepare.
Yeah, they're gonna do what they have to do.
Well, it happened in our neighbor's house, right? They built their garage on top of the city's sewers system and, and then they had to rip up their whole garage floor and everything to get access to it. They built it on top of the main.
Yeah.
They had to assume the liability. They screamed like, "Why did the city put this underneath there?" "No, that was there and the easement was there for, before you built your garage on top of it."
Right, yeah, right. And what I wanted to understand is that it's not just saying, "We can cut the wires and open the gate."
No.
It also means that if that guy's house next to you burns down because they can't get to that transformer, you could be paying for his house. It's not, it's a liability.
It, it's, it is really, I mean, if you went and drove the alleys that were supposed to be easement and you...
Yes.
And we should have alleys.
Precisely. Parts of town are valid.
And so it's like, it's punishment trying to do it right, trying to keep the alley easement open. And, and you go to the end of our easement, there's a building there.
Are we talking down by the Molly Edition?
We're talking anywhere. Not sunrise. Sunrise is what we were referencing.
Not far into town.
Just sunrise. Norris, you can call the sunrise. There's an easement on the east side and back of the lots. Fifteen foot easement back from each lot.
We got, we got a problem on north of town because there's no alleys.
Between...
There're supposed to be alleys like they do up in the old part of town. They got alleys that they got their power that goes down. When they designed that north side, and I was here, when they designed that, they didn't think that was gonna go, so nobody put no alleys in there to make it that the property line lines here. The power would go down that, there're no alleys down.
In Molly, there are...
There are easements, they just brought lots of trees.
I understand.
But the people may not have realized.
They were so anxious to get going, they didn't...
Well, but the easement is, there wasn't the outlet.
Well, they wouldn't have to have an easement if they had alleys back there. They had one going one way and the other.
Regardless, so it's the way it is, like, we can't change it at this point.
When you, when you join two lots, the easement doesn't go away for a few...
No.
It's still there.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's still the right to use it. And I appreciate you hearing from me.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. That's, that's good. And James, everybody needs to think about the convenience of their neighbors and the utilities and everybody that's involved because that's how we keep things working well. If you can't get through it. I, I know that, um, one of the houses, so their court came over to my house and he just chewed down, rolled wire and he said, "I can't get to the transformer, how am I gonna fix it?"
Thank you, guys, for the opportunity. Thank you for everything. And, uh, appreciate the thoughts.
Let's do the liquor license right back. Do we have any representative to that?
No.
Was he gonna come?
No.
Okay. Um, June 5th is Chelsea Wortman wedding at St. Rose. June 12th, Father Mike at St. Rose, right? And June 19th, Michelle Leder wedding at St. Rose. So these are all St. Rose. So we just need to, um, have a motion to approve this for the legion. They're, they're all in June.
I'll second that.
So, motion by Bob and seconded by James. And we'll start with Larry.
Yes.
And Isla?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes.
And James.
Yes.
Okay, so, we'll gun in a circle around all these, but now we're down to, let's do the economic development report, Aaron, if you will.
All right, I don't really have a fit number for you, but I'll just talk.
Did you want this?
No, I think I'm okay. Unless, can you guys hear me?
Nope.
Yeah, good, okay. Um, I wanted to thank the city for writing a wonderful letter of recommendation for the baseball association um, to receive the Knox County Improvement Grant. It was a wonderful letter and I appreciate it. That application has been submitted and we'll find out probably this week how that goes. Um, I just wanted to talk about a couple upcoming events that I know of. May 16th is a community club golf tournament. It starts at nine AM and you can call the golf course to register and the proceeds go to support scholarships for the Crafton High School seniors. There's a few other events, like, May 23rd, the senior center is having a free will donation picnic luncheon at the South Park from eleven thirty to one PM. And if you can't make it to the park, you can call the senior center and they will be able to deliver meals. Um, the best of the background tour of northeast Nebraska started on May 1st. And we do have some area businesses that are participating. CJ's, the Poli Museum in the Haymarket, Lakeview Golf Course, Main Street Treasures, and Evil House Recreation. Kim Swatki actually has helped quite a lot with that and has built the, the website for that. And so if you have any questions, you can either go to the website or go to the Facebook page to learn more about it. It's similar to a passport program, but it's not a passport program.
It's called what?
It's called, it's a really long name. It's the best of the background tour of northeast Nebraska.
Okay.
There is also the Nebraska Tourism Passport, the State Tourism Passport that started May 1st as well. And they're finally getting to the northeast Nebraska region. They are having a spot on the Meridian Bridge. So we're getting people into northeast Nebraska now. So where their goal is to take a picture by the, by that area and hopefully just see that area by the lake. Um, let's see. I've been just meeting with different people about, um, what they would like to see in Crafton, such as different improvements at the parks and also getting the project started for the sidewalk renovation that we had talked about last year with this repurposing of the CBPG funds. And we're just getting all of that paperwork to, um, the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District so they can start that and hopefully then they can tell us what we all need to do with that. But we're getting all that information to them. Um, if you read legislature, LB 406 has been something that deals with our area. They're essentially wanting to do a study, an economic impact study on northeast Nebraska, on our Knox County area north of Highway 12. So that passed the first round. So they're having a discussion, they're having discussions regarding that. So if anyone has any idea of what you'd like to see in our area, let me know. That's kind of all what I've been up to, I guess. Working on other things, daycare and meeting with people and...
Any work on daycare, any making a headway in the daycare?
Not, not really. Meeting with, talking with people from the state, um, doing webinars, trying to figure out how you, what you do.
Yeah.
How do you get these people, "I am going to, I'm gonna talk to paper and just put something out there, be like, 'Hey, if you're interested, just talk to me if you wanna make a little committee or something. We have so many people that want to move here, but there's no daycare. There's great quality daycare here, but they're awful. So what can we do to entice people to move here and also want to live here? Because I know that I wouldn't be able to come somewhere that didn't have a daycare." It's, it's a real thing and how, I mean, housing and, and, uh, daycare are issues that we have, so... I mean, everyone, it's a great, we have a great community and I just think if we can try to focus on some of these things then we can keep moving forward and keep attracting people that want to live in our area, so...
Do you have any sites that you would want to put a daycare or fit in here? Someplace that would be generally located and it's, uh, can't have it uptown, anyway, where is that?
No, no. I haven't looked at my building for that. I, I honestly did a good walk-through of my building. I'm like, "Oh, man, I don't think it would..."
You can tell you my house.
Yeah. So I mean, if I could, um, look at City Land even, if we could look at saying, what, what City Land do we have that could potentially be a good idea for a daycare? Maybe that's an idea, we could work with someone...
There, there's a spot down there just north of me where the propane tanks is right close to the park, which every daycare person would like to have.
Right.
You know where the propane tanks used to be? And I think that's city property, am I correct?
Right.
A guy could put a, a guy could put just a slab and have just a one-level thing and, and that's a location. I've been looking at that and I thought, you know, the park is right there.
Right.
You know, and in the summertime, they have a swimming pool, they can do, they can do a number of things. They got a golf field to play on. That would be probably a spot. That would be probably a spot that would, you first gotta find a piece of ground that you wanna do at first.
For sure.
And then, you know, my wife does daycare for forty seven years in town here. She's threw a couple things by me and, and I think it needs to be addressed pretty soon because you're not, nobody's getting any younger here.
No, no. So I guess I would, I would like to see what your guys' thoughts are. Do I have a town hall meeting and say, this is my, this is what I wanna talk about daycare? We have a need for it? Do we discuss a strategic plan where these are what everyone feels we need in our community?
How many people, how many kids were you thinking about using this for daycare? Thirty, forty kids?
I think a center would be a nice idea.
I mean, I don't know.
I don't know, I think we need to see the, what people would need in the community. At least maybe we do a small survey that goes out.
Maybe do a survey, ask them, you know.
Yeah.
And with towns growing with young people, they're buying up houses in town here.
Right.
And my wife gets called probably two or three times a week looking for daycare, ones that are moving back into town.
Yep, that's what we.
That's why I stay at home with my kids, because I take my kids to block. You gotta, you gotta use regulations. You've got thirty kids, you gotta have so many staff, you gotta have, you know, so you gotta look at all those options before you.
Right.
I mean, that's a, that's a location I've been looking at.
Okay. Thank you. I, I am very willing to sit down with anyone that has a need.
I don't know if the city would let us do something like that, but I, I think it would be a general area that people could, you know, the utilities are there.
And maybe we, because I don't think the city wants to run it, but if we could provide the land.
You'd have to hire somebody to.
Then maybe we could do some kind of impact.
Be self-sufficient.
Maybe, Aaron, you could start with, like, assume you're gonna have twenty kids from age this to age that. Get the state regs on, how many workers do you have to have per car? How many rooms do you have to have?
Okay.
Do you have to have a nutritionist? I mean, get the needs out there.
Okay.
And then, you know, work with those costs.
I'm sure, I'm sure there's enough contractors in this town that can help out.
Okay.
Construct the thing. Material's high right now. Now it's time to do the plan. Administration might go down, we don't know. Material went up two hundred fifty percent already. Lots of them. But I think the community would come together if they found a spot even to help out.
Okay.
Eight by twelve, or four by eight sheet of plywood, what, hundred dollars?
Twelve dollars to two hundred.
Something like that. We have the, you know, there's several places as far as land is concerned.
Could that be something you could talk about?
And the park is nice, but there's also places where they could have their own little place, you know.
Oh, for sure, their own backyard that's meant in.
My wife gets, the kids wanna go down the park so bad. Aaron, it could be right there, you know, it's controlled area, away from the traffic. You got a lot of different things, you know, some of the older kids could go play ball, some of the kids could go play on the swings themselves, but then you'd keep the little ones in a fenced in area inside.
Okay. That's a, thank you. Yeah, I think, I think Crafton needs more good quality daycare. We have so many great providers right now, but.
James, do you have a flood zone?
What's that?
Down there where those propane tanks were, is that a flood zone?
I don't know.
That crits right there.
Well, I know that wall that area.
I don't think Joe Lear's moved flood insurance. That would be.
It's right, it's right there, his yard.
A lot of that area was moved a few years ago out of the propane park, so I don't know.
We'd have to look at, so we don't give you the insurance.
For sure. Yeah, I would ask that.
There's a lot of water comes down that hill on the street right through that area west of Joe's. You know, might wanna just consider raising that up a little bit to keep it away. But as far as the spot goes, good spot?
A good spot.
Okay, thank you. Is it, okay?
Thank you. If anyone has any ideas, call me, text me, email me.
You've got one sheet bills, I believe. You've got those pre-approved and then you have to march approved. One of the things that you're gonna probably see in the audit, we've talked about this a little bit, was that when Lisa first came and started bringing these reports in, you know, pre-grad and these approved estimates and actual, that there was a month or two there that the estimates were still being given separate, but the actual was not included in the actual. So, you know, the auditor just pointed that out and said, you gotta include the actual with the actual. So we'll, we're paying, they have any percent sent.
So there won't be no more estimates?
Oh, no, there'll still be an estimate, but I just point out that that's one of the things that we give the auditor. They point out whatever they see. So I think that if, we need to probably vote to approve pay those bills.
What is the BOK financial fifteen five seven three?
That's the interest on the Sharon Street.
Okay.
It's due June.
So we just, we just don't see it every month?
Right, right. It's here, it's here. We get interest only now and in December we get the principal and interest and then it's about sixty-six thousand.
Kurt, is that any?
Yep.
Any in your bill?
That's actually, we bought the big package because the bigger package gets the less it costs, so we have future hours yet, I don't think it's bound to be hours.
What for auto parts from Yankee for seven hundred and eighteen went broke down?
The sewer plant had a bearing.
Yeah, that's what it bears.
That's what one bearing caused.
Boy, we need to get that thing out there. And before cost goes up all the way through. Millers have applied for an extension, or Millers have applied for the extension with the, with the Department of Environment for, our deadline is twentieth April of August of twenty-two. They've applied for that dead, for that, to extend that deadline. They have not sent me their communication that it was accepted yet, but they said that would be the first thing they'd do so that they get us off the hook, so we, you know.
Yeah, for extension.
Yeah. So that's our bottom, just want to pass that. So if that kind of clarified, then we'll accept a motion to pay those bills.
I'll make a motion to pay the monthly bills.
Okay, motion by Larry, pay bill, seconded by?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Isla. And let's just start with Isla.
Ah, yes.
And Bob.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
And Larry.
Yep.
And with that, let's have a motion to adjourn. Are we done?
No. I don't know.
We're not gonna do as committee assignments. I have two people that I've talked to out of the group and I've got two more I need to talk to.
How long is it gonna take this thing?
It doesn't matter, it's my assignment, it doesn't matter, it's not, it's not ready, we're not gonna do it. If they wanna continue to work, nobody's been fired, so if they wanna continue to work, they can work. If they don't, they don't. I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Don't make a motion to adjourn.
Isla made a motion to adjourn. When I make these assignments, folks, those people will come in here and be introduced to you and you will have time to talk about this, but I'm gonna just do this on the demand situation. You sit there all night and on adjourn, you want to. I've been out, I've been out town for a week, I have not talked to anybody. I will talk to those people again before.
How are we supposed to work on a daycare center if we don't have a community?
That's, the Economic Development Director is working on that.
And she's under the direction of the committee that's in her contract.
They could still work there, people that you're asking about. We can, we can approve these people here and whoever wants to get in.
I, this is just not gonna happen tonight. If you wanna come and talk to me, fine. It's been very clear, I've had two people tell me on that committee, they're not gonna talk to me. If they're not gonna talk to me, they're not gonna be on the committee. That's it.
Can bring me up to speed, Chair, and the prime of the whole board. These committees were set up almost two years back.
Yes, when I first came on, I appointed certain people to the committee. They can work as long as the mayor, as the mayor's pleasure. They can work the entire time the major is in office, but they can be replaced at any time. So I read the ordinance that way.
We didn't, so that's how the ordinance reads?
Yes. The Economic Development Group, all of them quit, but two. The, the recommendations that were made to me by Alan, I have not had a chance to talk to all of them. And I think it's quite obvious that, that there's not good communication.
So we didn't have an economic development heard two years ago?
There was always an economic development. First it was Linda Webin. Linda did it almost all, all on. Do you know who her board was, her mother?
Alan was on it at that time.
She was in, he was on city council, was he not?
He's still up with economic development.
Well, but who was on the economic development council?
I don't remember exactly.
I don't think there was before.
But we had a board last year and we are using those people if we have to. But this seems so frivolous. I mean, this is six months now and if they're willing to, to work on a committee, then why would you turn them down? If you have volunteers that are willing to work for veteran at Crafton, why would you turn them down? I don't understand this.
I'm not turning anybody down, I just wanna talk to them.
Turn them?
I don't, I never turn anybody down, I just wanna talk to them.
Well, then call them.
I'll do that.
This is ridiculous.
Hardly even, the mayor, is that how it was, hardly becoming the mayor? That the mayor decided he was on?
Always asked, it's in the ordinance.
It's in the ordinance.
But it always been a priority of mine, it's something that's been here, they all on board.
So Alan doesn't really have the authority to name that committee. That's the same trick, the same is true of the so-called watchdog. The ordinance says that the two is to be recommended by the economic development, two is supposed to be recommended by the three Cs and three is to be recommended by the, by the mayor. And they were all named by the economic development and set up to watch the council, which was not its purpose. The count, the purpose of the watchdog was to watch economic development, see if they did their job.
I know.
After, after Webin was Charlie, Charlie was then the economic development director. She bought seven hundred and fifty dollars a month of her paycheck, came out of economic development.
You know, and I, I guess, when it comes to the same, I agree with her, but they're I guess if somebody's more than willing to volunteer their time, I'm more than willing to let them.
That's fine. I just wanna talk to them and I just haven't had time to do that.
Is that list of people been the same for six months? This has been a communication issue for six months?
I don't know when you first gave me that.
It was in December. You asked for, you were gonna talk about it and so you can't wait, started trying to run people.
I don't wanna do this, I don't want this again.
You don't need to share, and I just don't get it.
Well, you've made it very clear that you're not gonna come and talk to me, that Alan's not gonna come and talk to me. You accused me of causing his stroke and I'm not willing to work with that at this point. I just had surgery too, so give me a little shot.
You said at one point in time that as a council, we had the authority to remove any ordinance at any point in time if we choose to do so? Right?
You can rewrite ordinances, yes.
Well, when I was up there the other day, you said you can just, like three four, three fifteen, you just throw it in the garbage.
I don't know, I'm not a lawyer.
But at this point in time, looking out for the best interest of our city.
But what does that have to do with it?
Can we throw that ordinance in the garbage that says that the only person for our city's best interest to pick the people that want to do a job for us, our community, is the mayor?
No, you can't just pick and choose what powers they have and what they don't. That, the, the committee name, it comes from the state. You can't go over state law. Now, if you wanna revamp what the law is, then don't sit and pick and pull at, at a meeting, but sit down and say, this is what we want and that's fine. I don't have a problem, I have a problem with everything coming to the meeting and I never hear about it until it gets here.
And the real problem I have is, we've heard about this for a long time, it was still the same situation we were in. I don't, I don't have the remedy for that, I don't have a magic. One, I just, I just wanna do what's best for our community and it's.
So do I. I, so do I and quite frankly, you guys, it's a learning process as it goes along, there's a lot of learning that takes place and, you know, I'm, I'm not saying that I know it all and all and I don't think any of us ever will.
So we as a council have absolutely no say in the economic development of this town?
I didn't say that, Bob. I never once said that. How can you take what I say and make it so different?
No, because we wanna go forward.
We all wanna go forward.
So before you will appoint them, they gotta come in and visit you on the phone or in the office?
Does that not make sense that if I'm going to appoint somebody for?
No, I, I, I'm not gonna say it doesn't or doesn't. The thing about it is, we're not a very big town.
Okay. I know, I'm, I'm not getting my work done, okay? That's what you're, I, so I'm just gonna say that.
Not a very big town, you probably know everybody that applied pretty well.
Nobody applied to me. I was given a list of names, I would like to talk to them, plus some I'd like to see work on that.
So you, you have two people that are really, that you've talked to that are ready to go on this committee and help out?
I'm not, I'm not gonna discuss this in open meeting about this person, that person, some other person, maybe, whatever. When I.
Is there strictly recommendations for you, Cheryl? Can anybody add anything to it?
I know that.
Well, then could you just add somebody to it that you want to or two people to it and just go with it so that we can move forward?
Do you want on that committee, Herman?
Do I want on the committee? I have a lot of things that I would like to, that I have a lot of responsibilities to. So I'm trying to help Alan out in any way that I can because he thoroughly loves Crafton and he wants to do what's best for the town and he's been doing this for a long time. And he's feeling like you're trying to get rid of him and you are. I just appreciate you would say right now that you'd go on the committee if you want him to back out. But for him to sit down and talk to you, it's almost impossible because his stroke that he had twenty-five years ago, he gets very emotional and I think a lot of people have seen that. And he raises his voice and he can't help it.
I understand that.
He's not gonna, couldn't stop through that again and I would blame him.
I understand that.
So he's working for the best of this town and so are the people that he has suggested. But it's not that you have to appoint those people, you could add, you could take them off, but just do something. Cause they just, they wanna get working on the daycare. We've got some playground proposals that they're starting to talk about. We've got a lot of things going on, but they're all discouraged too because they feel like, well, what's the use? We never get anything accomplished.
That's true.
Because they've been fighting.
But that's not been me, that's not been me. But that's not been me. That's not been me.
It's been the $4,000 that sat there with them two years ago that finally went in the coffers for them. They had no idea. If you look at the balance sheet, the equity account right now for economic development, it is as of 9/30 of 2020. We've got six months. So if you don't close your books, if you don't update those equity accounts, you can't just look at these tiny little reports and see, okay, this is what we've got to work with, folks.
That, you know, you, there is the merit to what you're saying, but I have also given to Aaron and to you all of the money that has come in, that was available since I've been in office for two years. And none of it has gone out except for, you allowed for.
The computers last year.
For, and travel and meetings. At first year, there was money went out for that. We paid, that, that fund paid for Kalina's phone when she had it. There was money went, and then it was the next year, you decide, you got the board to vote to take no more money out of there and make the city pay for Aaron's wages, which actually 840 said that it was given a sales tax so we could help pay for that cost. So you're asking the city to pay for that cost. So, but the money is there and you, and it's all there and it's been accounted to you. I've given you that. Every year I gave Aaron a history of from the time it began, as far back as the computer went. And it's all there.
That's correct, but we had.
So you knew exactly how much money was there?
Not until, you just gave these reports of the last, last month of the year and you got to put that $4,000 back.
When you knew it was there, come back, you'd already voted on it.
I might not.
Good.
So what's this going to accomplish if they sit down and talk to you? Do you make some evaluation on them that they're good or bad? Or I don't understand why they have to come and talk to you. We got a bunch of people that are willing to donate their time.
You know what? It's just simple because I'm the mayor. I want to be able to.
So the board don't have nothing to say about anything?
Yes, you have to approve it, but I have to introduce them and talk to them.
Introduce them and ask them what?
I'm just saying that facetiously. So just, you know, that's what, let's just end it at that. I'm not just cart-like saying.
These are volunteer people. They're not getting paid.
Can I pay to put an ad in the paper?
Absolutely. Sure. I don't care if you put any ads on to it.
Okay.
What do you mean? Can I, you don't have to ask my permission if you're going to pay for it.
I just want a good cohesive group that we can work together for the year of Crofton and stop fighting about this constantly.
I do too.
It's defeating.
Yes, it is.
It's so defeating to me. Like, what is the purpose of me working? When I, when we're just constantly fighting about economic development?
I know.
What if the new people come to a meeting? Would it invite you to come to the meeting? Would you come and sit down?
I'm actually, I actually have the right to come to all the meetings that you have as an economic development group.
They come together as a meeting. Would you come to the meeting?
But I, how many times did I walk the auditorium while you were complaining, Aaron? With you, how many times have I listened to other complaints? How many times have I done everything I could to get somebody to talk to me about what was going on? And how many times has I told, we'll tell you as soon as we figure out what we want to do? I was never included. I've got plenty of other things to do, so I said, go ahead, do it. That's your answer?
Arlene was.
Has nothing to do. And she was asked to leave the meeting one night, wasn't she?
One night, she was.
Yep. So it's not all on this end of it.
But she's the only one that can do anything about it, Cheryl, so.
Well, I'm going to do that. I'm going to try to do that. I'm going to try to get a group together that will work on, but I want everything very clear. And I did find some of that original paperwork that I did not have from you guys. And I think, I'm not saying that you tried to keep it away from me, but I found some stuff in the office that is about the 840 and about the original intent. And that's where I found the, the watchdog stuff. I talked to Bob briefly about it. Whatever, whatever it has evolved to, that all needs to be clarified before we throw a bunch of people in there that don't understand what they're trying to do. It's not fair for the committee. It's not fair for the council. It's not fair for me. And so everybody needs to be on the same page. Along with meeting those people, trying to do the guidelines for what we want, get past those. Aaron is obviously there. We need to get the lawyer in on it. We need to make sure that it works with what is in the statutes for what it's supposed to be and that it works with 840. And 840 has recently been changed, so they're changing some of the guidelines. Do you know about that, Aaron? What that all is about?
No.
And Northeast, Higginbottom's been talking with me some. That's our representative. They're going to be the ones to do the money. She, Aaron just said tonight they're doing the paperwork. So it's not all in the dark. It's being worked on.
I can't remember the exact date, but maybe Irma can, when, when our current 840 is done, this, this round, how long is, are we a year out?
Sorry, I'm two thousand and sixteen, ten, two thousand and twenty-nine. But the economic development stops prior to that.
Right.
Say that again. When you, what'd you say? The two, the 840, what? Tom?
What date is, because this 840 was. Was, was, it was a block of time in units. It's not an indefinite thing, right?
No, you're right.
The sales tax is, if it is directly connected with the 840, I don't know that. But the sales tax that is, was approved for Crofton, I think I ran across yesterday, was 2024.
So that's the economic development, I think, because that's, that stops like four or five years before the sales tax actually stops. The 840. And then we're supposed to have that amount of time to spend whatever money we have and the loans that we paid out for the hundreds of thousands of dollars that we were supposed to have that were down to, I don't even know what it is, 40,000 total? Because it was all spent. But we don't have much time left and if you're going to increase this part of campus sales tax again in five years, you're going to do a lot of hard selling because of all this arguing that's been going on.
Well, because none's been done with the, the original deal. There's a lot, and I, I say that not, I guess, but the, the purpose of the sales tax was threefold. And that was infrastructure, swimming pool, and economic development.
Parks and.
And, excuse me, economic development, swimming pool, or parks and recreation, if you put that all together, and economic development, right? Or infrastructure. So the infrastructure has, there's, I think it was probably done well, the two, the Second Street. I haven't had a lot of complaints about that, although, you know, exactly where all that went, nobody, I, I never explored one or another. The swimming pool, people feel like it didn't all stay there. The economic development, you feel like it didn't do its job, you know, go where it was supposed to go. So when I say because nothing got done with it as planned, I'm just saying that seems to be the view.
Right. And there was, I mean, that money went somewhere. I mean, obviously, that money went to serve our community in some way, shape, or form, even though it wasn't directly to economic development and be it very illegal that it wasn't there. We don't have, none of us in the room have control over what happened in the past.
That's right. And we've always said that, that we were going forward from the day I came in, as far as I was concerned. And that's what I've done. I don't have any control over the past.
We didn't ask for anything.
You were on the board when you got. The infrastructure was supposed to be for big projects in town to Crofton, to help the community out.
That's right.
Big projects.
The money was originally supposed to be set aside for pretty big projects.
Yes, not the general. Say that again, James.
The money was supposed to be set aside for a matching pump project or some type of project, it would be a pool project. Before the ink was even dry, the city spent all of it on Second Street. $190 or whatever, going to Second Street before.
That was in, out of the infrastructure part?
Right, but they, you realize the city had already had plans to pay for that before we had our first meeting with the ones that said. So whatever they did with all that money, I have no idea, but it did rub the members that did it poorly because we explained to the board, that's set, that's aside, so we're trying to do it one city block. We could do matching two cities or three, but they couldn't listen to us. That's where some of these boards came to light. The North Park Board, the Pool, you know, the Direct Board, all came out of that.
A lot of people felt that all the swimming pool money's been just.
Well, part of it went to pay lifeguards, part of it went to pay the, you know, maintenance on the pool. It's not what it was designed for.
And I was going to say, do you agree with that?
No, none of it should have been designed. It was never designed for that. It was never designed for that. But as far as going back to economic development, I think we've seen some good things. I think Aaron did some good things. I think we've done some good things in the past. The problem with it is, is, and I agree, they have meetings and nothing ever seems to come out of them. Whether good, bad, or indifferent, and I agree with the ladies, I think there's a lot of arguing that goes on in this town, no matter what. If somebody donated a million dollars for a pool, we could have come up with an idea to build a pool, not have that one way.
Lost half of that.
So it's, but to sit here and say we want to interview people for a volunteer position, if, if I didn't want to interview you and I was volunteering, I, I don't see why interviewing has to do with me volunteering my time. Let's help the people volunteer their time.
Okay. Well, I'm just not ready to do it tonight and I'm not going to make that. I'll, I will try to do the best I can to get, I've got two people I want to talk to. And like I said, I was not available last week, so it would have been done.
Can you give us a time?
Part of it depends on when I get home.
That's, I understand that. Did we have a guarantee by next meeting?
By next meeting, but not by the special meeting.
And are we having, I see the date on the meeting is like the 21st. Are we doing the 21st?
Well, that was if you passed the ordinance tonight.
And that's our question. What happened to the ordinance? Do we, do we table the ordinance? Are we building yards or what?
I thought you, I thought you were going to wait to see what happened with the financial.
Yeah, let's just table the ordinance.
Okay, so we got to table.
Can we, can we, I mean, and I agree with Bob. I agree with the ladies that I've been on the board since December and it just comes up every meeting. And it doesn't seem like we got any closer in December than we are now, four or five months away. So I guess if I was volunteering for something like that, you couldn't decide, I did it in my own state home. I don't want to volunteer for this stuff if I can't get something put together. I need a direction. I need a direction. We need to get something going here, Cheryl. We need to. I don't care how you do it. I don't care how you do it. Let's just do it.
Come, I know that. And I've had several pockets of that, but that's all I had to do is just do it.
Somebody going to do a better watchdog committee, you're going to have to interview people there too.
That watchdog committee has to, I think that we need to sit down and say, what exactly do we want?
This is needed.
Yeah.
It's in there.
Can I just at least ask for a liaison for the council member, just as someone, so I have someone?
I think if I got one, you've been talking to Ms. Murphy and you've been bringing them in with you. I don't think that's an issue. Nobody, like I keep saying, nobody's been fired. There is no firing. We're just trying to find a new committee. Because everybody quit. I did not, I did not fire any of them.
Everybody didn't quit.
Okay, then why are we naming new ones?
Because I, we're missing two. Two people quit on each committee.
Okay, I'm here.
Not everybody quit. Cheryl, don't say that.
Well, the last report I had was that there were two left on the economic development.
I'm sorry, there's three and the economic development directors are.
And I had, I mean, I resigned to be on the council.
Right. So the people we have on the economic development are not all. Well, Bob, how about you come to talk with me?
About the, the people that are on? I have no problem with that. About the list of people and the two others that you want to.
And what we, and what our plan, well, what, see our visions together.
I don't have an issue with that at all. As long as it's sooner than later, we can make it work and if you're healthy and willing to do it, I would, I would sit down with you. That's not a issue.
But what do we have? I guess we're already into this week, aren't we? I'll probably be dealing with the auditor all day, wouldn't say. We've got Dr. Friday.
Friday won't work, huh? We'll board just, early next week, you just let me know. Do whatever works out.
I'll give you, and we'll sit down, look at some vision. You can work as the liaison to the economic development. You've already worked on it.
People.
I would love to be part of that conversation as well, because I think it's important, like, is that getting it all together?
Yeah.
I mean, you have the members, so then I, and then I know what you guys are experiencing as well.
I want the board chairman to sit down with me and get some visions and then we'll meet with you. It'll be fine. I have vote to adjourn. I'm going home. I do not take a consent vote.
Did I make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah. And you got a second? Just go.
Did we just make a quick announcement last week? Were we waiting on that? Okay, that's table also. All right. There was a period thing.
I'll say it.
Okay, motion by Isla, second. Uh, Bob?
Yes.
Jane, Barry?
Yep.